We'll call this work session Monday, August 15th to order. Invocation given by Mr. Stewart and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Ashburn.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for many blessings you've given us. We ask thou to watch over the proceedings and be pleasing in your sight. We ask you to watch over the citizens and employees of Scottsboro as we go about our daily lives. Watch over the military, bring them home safely to their families. Guard God and direct us so in the end we may all come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, we've got a certificate of recognition we're gonna do.
Now, this is a certificate of recognition from Mayor and City Council from the city of Scottsboro, presented to Boys and Girls Club in North Alabama. The Boys and Girls Club has been recognized as such a national anthem at the Northeast and Southeast Regionals Conference. And we're very proud of all of them.
Number one tonight on the agenda is discuss the request to perceive a rezoning at 980 Stewart Road. Mr. Klitch, can you come up? And I will try to get your presentation. Is it off?
Thank you.
It must have went off. Just turned on computer. Oh. Come up. Thank you. Go ahead.
Our refined ladies and gentlemen tonight, all of you good?
Yes.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am here proposing an upscale RV resource campground on Highway 72. And I put together a little presentation that the council and the ladies and gentlemen go through. But first, I'd like to frame the discussion of the industry we're actually talking about. The, in 2020, 2021, was projected for 2022, there's over a million and a half RVs that are going to be, have been sold or really sold. Now, a lot of these are nicer than the Cousin Eddie, the National Anthem, the Florida. When you say RV, everyone thinks Cousin Eddie, it's like, that's not what I'm going at. There are 93.8 million households identified as camping households with an RV or camp. The industry itself makes up $6.8 billion annually. And of those 93 million, 53% of annual households in Denver are over $50,000. And I think it's about 24% over a hundred thousand. So it's a large industry and it's not important. People make a decent living if they go down to the, um, so that's the industry we're talking about. It's revolutionary. The industry itself, that 93.8 million is growing at an annual rate of about 7%. So that's the industry we're talking about. Now, let's talk about the rest. It is prime commercial property along Highway 72. The traffic count is roughly 30,000 to 40,000 cars a day on Highway 72. And this has, um, this has great frontage, so a commercial business is going to go on this lot. It wouldn't make sense to build homes there, maybe apartments, but really someone's gonna bring in a business for this because of its proximity. It's 30 minutes east of Huntsville. It's seven minutes from downtown Scottsboro. And I think Chattanooga is an hour away, so it's kind of a little disclosure, Huntsville and Huntsville versus the city of Alabama. And so, you can go down there. So another benefit, being seven minutes away from downtown Scottsboro, anyone that visits it, it's close enough to where there's an event or something, or just to walk around the square, it's close enough where they can say, yeah, I'm gonna do that. The downtown group has done an amazing job with the events and the calendar that they have of always consistently having events. And so, this will be an avenue where people from out of town can come and attend those events and support the local businesses down the square. And also, Lake Underfield. Um, there's attractions to Scottsboro, there's obviously Lake Underfield, there's over 75 fishing tournaments annually in the lake. And it can be used year round because the temperatures don't get cold enough in the winter where, you know, people can still fish it. And, you know, it's the best fishing lake in Alabama. It's the best fishing lake in North Alabama. And North Alabama has all kinds of, um, great fishing stuff. So, a lot of the community, part of the community that, or part of the design of the RV park now, it will go up scale, will cater to the fishing community, you know, whether boats will be, will be boat storage, will have a good site. That's something that we're gonna cater since that's such a viable part of the economy. We will cater to that to draw more fishermen here. We can sell, you know, Lake Underfield, and we can provide quality accommodations for people that want to come and visit, stay a week, stay a long weekend, whatever it is. Maybe they've never been in this area. Maybe they've never had a place to stay in this area. Maybe wrong. And then, for the people that are coming, it's going to support the local economy. I mean, people gotta eat. A lot of people don't like to, especially when on vacation, they don't like to cook. These RVs all have little kitchens, little baths, I mean, they're nicer than some hotel rooms. But what we want to do is we want to support the local businesses. When people come and say, hey, I wanna stay at your RV store, we're gonna give a sheet of the businesses that we love, the restaurants we love. What makes Scottsboro great? You know, unclaimed baggage hangings, and we don't have a list of stuff. So if they're looking or sitting around saying, hey, what can we do? There will be, they'll have the information of where to go to get the best of Scottsboro. But also, you know, whenever you have RVs, you're gonna have gas stations, you're gonna have mechanics, you're gonna have any automobile related stuff. They'll also grow, or let this establishment grow in Scottsboro. And then, I said a couple times, it's gonna be upscale, but let me get into the specifics of what I need. So, um, full disclosure, this is my lifestyle right now. My wife and I travel around the country, homeschool our kids, um, in a bit together. And the reason we want to do this is because we have stayed at so many terrible ones that we feel like we can create a really great environment that people would like to come to. And so, all sites will be level and we'll be concrete because the concrete is what people look for. When you're talking about people that have an upscale, they, you know, a nice RV, when they go to an RV park, they know where they're looking for. And that's what we're catering to. We're using our experience that we've gleaned over, now we're almost at seven months, um, to really create a great space. Roadways, one of the biggest side, the biggest problems with campgrounds right now is infrastructure. Most campgrounds are 20, 30, 40 years old, and the average size of RV was smaller than it is today. We're talking more about 30 feet, you know, even for the grand one. Now, they're at 45 feet because the year's better, right? It's the American way, everyone wants more. But the problem is, is the roads aren't wide enough and the turning radius required for those larger and nicer units is much greater. And there's not a lot there. I mean, when you go to Goosebumps, you go to Goosebumps Park, the roads are not built for some of the larger and nicer RVs. The modern designs for the bathhouse and these quality finishes, we are going to make a very nice place. We're going to create an environment where people come to Scottsboro to, um, we wanna create a peaceful environment, but we also wanna create a nice environment that they're like, they get there and they're, uh, they feel good about where they are. Large individual showers and changing areas. So we've all been in the bathrooms with tiny showers and that little bitty tiny changing area out there, which really could have closed up there in its all gauge plan. Okay? Who wants to make it big? We'll probably do single bathrooms instead of like the locker room style to give people maximum privacy. You know, in the age of pandemics, that's something that if we design it, we have to think about that. Whether you agree with it or not, it is a terrible disease and it has affected millions of people. So what I want to do, as we design this, we're gonna keep that in mind to where if something happens again, we can still operate and still bring people to Scottsboro. With an individual bathroom, we have the option to clean it after every person uses it. And so, we can, because of the experiences we've had and lessons learned, we create a business that will still operate and still bring people here, even if, you know, the whole world sits down here. All sites will have 50 and 30 and 20 and power hookups. And so, um, the power mani, the power requirements for some of the new RVs are a lot greater than they used to be. And the power management systems are much more complex. And so, that's something that we will cater to. As we, you know, as the industry progresses, we're just gonna get more and more complex. Because these units are absolutely amazing that they're making. We will have a building that can be rented out or leased for church service. One of the biggest things that is missing from the vast majority of RV parks and campgrounds is church on Sunday. My wife and I believe strongly that just because you live this life or just because you're on vacation, it doesn't mean you don't have a church. That's an important part of our life. And since we're designing it and we're planning it, that's something that we're going to make a part of. And so, uh, but that space can also be used for rallies, for groups that wanna come in, for, um, I've talked to one of the local churches about doing VDX and that. And so, it'll be a flex space that can, you know, have a lot of users. That's not a lot of campgrounds or RV resorts have those. But I think it's a very valued add because then you can potentially bring large groups of people to Scottsboro, you know, 10, 20, 30 people at a time. And then, you know, really dial in, get some local businesses involved and stuff like that. Sites will be spaced 20 to 40 feet apart with natural vegetation separate east side. Everyone loves privacy. Most people do this lifestyle because they like privacy, and that's what we want to give them. It's naturally going to limit the amount of sites we can have because the vast majority of campgrounds or RV parks are parking lots. They jam the sites as close together as possible because that's the way that they think you can maximize profit. And they sacrifice the experience. And that's not what we're wanting to do. We're wanting to give people their experience, we're wanting people to come here to get the, if they're coming on vacation, to rest, to give them privacy. I know someone that will actually go to RV parks to have a pit bill, you know, go to RVs parks to scout out the sites that actually have privacy. We want that to be every site. And there's gonna be a ton of trees and there's gonna be, um, I don't know the best way to separate it, but there's gonna be a lot of clutter between the racks. It's going to be a peaceful environment of privacy thanks to more than fire protection. This is both for security and for, um, overall peace and quiet. I mean, if that's, it's about keeping people out as much as it is keeping people in. And there's, there's really no way to create that peaceful environment unless it's fully surrounded. And so, it will have very good separation between any of the adjacent properties around it. You know, why? One of the things the pandemic did is it's pushing a lot of people to remote jobs. And those, that's a huge section of the new people in this industry that they're getting full-time remote jobs. And they're like, well, I don't need a house, I don't need that hassle. I mean, why do you have to, you need to own a house, right? And so, they're, so they're taking, they're traveling, so technology in and around the campsite isn't gonna be that much more important. Because as we design this, we're not designing this for 2022. We're looking at 2025 and 2030 because I expect, I'm gonna build this well, I'm gonna build it to last. I mean, one of the trends now that we have to think about, believe it or not, is electronic cars, charging stations. Because now, you know, everyone has a pit bill and knows how to put so behind a car. But increasingly, those are gonna start becoming electric. And you're gonna need a chart. Well, the infrastructure for those charging stations is actually pretty robust. And so, whether we put it in now or the rough end for it, that's something that we're thinking about. We're thinking long term. We're thinking, you know, Scottsboro is a whole, is growing. The businesses are coming and the housing and people will come next. And so, as Huntsville expands east, it is just gonna grow. So the perspective we're taking is, okay, here's the current need, but what's the current need in the future? I was talking to the chamber of Congress and with the new census, even though overall the population of Jackson County went down, the population of Scottsboro went up. So Scottsboro is growing, it's, I mean, it will have a changing need. And that's something that as we design this, we are thinking about. And then a playground. I have three kids, I have three-year-old, six-year-old, and nine-year-old. And only times were we're at, when we were staying at this campground. So I want to create an environment that's good for kids. It's going to have a playground, but frankly, my kids will probably design it. Because we're designing, we're taking this as a family approach. And so, it's going to be a safe space that focuses on good wholesome. And so, here's kind of an inspiration that you can see is that not every RV site is a parking lot. There are that have trees and vegetation that can deliver a calming atmosphere. And these are the modern RVs. This is what is coming out. They are nicer, they are nice as any hotel, I mean, the people take pride in their track. The people in the full-time RVs take pride in what they do. And so, that's why I say the power management systems are getting much more complex. Because as you can see, they are really nice. The electronics are getting more, uh, kinda like smart homes. You can control more and more electronics in the new RVs. And consequently, that takes more power, that takes more robust infrastructure. But since we are identifying these on the front end of the core design, you know, we're not taking an older campground and trying to flip it, uh, which does the whole industry in and of itself. We're essentially putting looks down the pit. The infrastructure's still undersized, you know, you might go to a, but we're trying, we're taking all this information on the front end and using it for our design. Again, all of these bathrooms are from campgrounds, are from RV parks. It is possible to have a very, very nice facility, and that's what our goal is. Because this is not a market that's served right now. The upscale RVs, the high-end RVs, the bigger RVs are not staying in Goosebumps Park. There's only nine short-term sites and they're not, probably not staying at Goosebumps because you can't even make online reservations. But as you drive through Goosebumps, the roads are a little bit narrower and it's pretty tight. And so, this is bringing a new, uh, group of people to Scottsboro. We're not taking from other campgrounds, we're bringing more people here that don't currently come here. You know, if they enjoy Lake Underfield, they're probably in Lake Underfield. But this is, this is not trying to take away from anyone, this is trying to bring more people here. And then, secure, safe, family environment. Safety is unbelievably important to us because, like I said, my family will be here. Though they keep the fire practice up on resort facilities, so anyone wandering on the property, they're not gonna be able to get in and get anything. So these security cameras monitoring the property. So if something happens or someone does come, we'll be able to identify who that person is and take care of them accordingly. Like I said before, it'll be a security and privacy fence. It's both for security, keep people in, and from people from coming in from the outside. It will create a positive atmosphere. And then the zero tolerance policy, that's really important to us because, um, you know, that's an issue financially that's more and more prevalent nowadays. And I don't want, that, that just brings all kinds of problems. And as a family environment, there's no room for any of the legal consequences. And, you know, whether it's legal or not, we are gonna request to make a ban for it, that it's not allowed on our land, because I just don't think it's right. And then, the final question is, what's meant for Scottsboro? You know, I think this is a great answer, but well, how does it actually benefit this city? It will bring in more people to Scottsboro to support local companies, support local businesses. And like I said, we will refer people to the local businesses. McDonald's, the Cantonese, the, all those national chains, that's not what makes Scottsboro great. It's all, it's the pain, it's going and sitting at the counter. That's what we want people to experience, you know? For better or for worse, I'm claiming baggage, I mean, everyone had loved stuff they haven't been able to. And, but it's a great experience walking in and seeing some of the stuff that they found and that they've been able to trace back to, like the actors and actresses. And it's just, it's an amazing experience. Increased tax revenues for the city. Of the lot, of the 14% lodging tax, 7% goes directly to Scottsboro. My rough numbers thinks that that will bring in at least $100,000 directly to the city to be used however you all wanna use it. So to help grow, to help grow it. I mean, that's, that's real money, that's not like sunshine and roses. That's actually what it deserves to be, because I wanna be real about my work from civil funding. Provide quality accommodations. This will be an upscale business. And like I said, the, over in New, this will bring a new crowd of people here. And I think it will be really good for Scottsboro. Do y'all have any questions?
You want to have any questions, Mr. Klitch?
I went by there yesterday on 72 and looked at it, and I couldn't really tell anything about it. I've had a copy of the map, but I didn't see until tonight when it was drawn off as the plot of the property. The south end, which part you talked about on 72 is the narrowest part. The north end is the widest part. And that part butts up against Fox Run Development.
Yes, sir.
Have you talked to any of those people, see what their opinion is on it?
Yes, so I've written them two, I wrote a letter explaining what I wanted to do. I met with those people, explained what I wanted to do, and then I wrote them a thank you letter, um, and addressing the concerns that they brought up and needed. And so, uh, their biggest concerns are loss of property values and safety. That's what I've gleaned from me. So, loss of property value. I looked everywhere, not just demographics, cities like Scottsboro, I looked everywhere to find actual proof where campgrounds or RV parks located by residential areas actually affect their property values. And I could not find anything. I know there was a newsletter that said, I've been doing this 40 years, it'll lower property values. I have not been able to find any proof. Now, I did find proof like a hospital, a cemetery, a funeral home, a power plant. Like, all those stuff do make, like, do affect property values. But, you know, with an upscale business that's not gonna be heavily trafficked, there's not gonna be really any, I don't think there will be much noise. Because usually the people that are living this lifestyle want peace and quiet. There's not gonna be any parties. I mean, it's going to be at a price point that's higher, so you won't get kind of the rowdy crowd. And then, for safety and security, we'll have, we'll have a privacy fence, there will be separation. Having the narrowest point where the entry is actually helps. Because since the privacy fence will border all three sides, you have a narrow point of, um, there are different parts. There's one on 72 close to Huntsville that the whole property borders. And that creates more of a security risk. But as far as what we're talking about, it's that front side is 70 feet wide. I talked to Aldott, the entrance, the driver will come off Stewart Road. And they said you'll need a 30-foot roadway to allow for a back to lane to traffic. And so, from a safety standpoint, it's actually gonna be a really safe thing. We're gonna put vegetation along the property lines to even separate it more. And there will be a 25-foot separation between the property line of the houses and, um, any, the, anything we decide to do, it'll be at least 25 feet.
So you did have some opposition at Fox Run?
Yes, I have some opposition, but I think it's based on this here. And, um, you know, I get it. If it was my house, I would, I would be concerned too. But I think when they ultimately see what the final product will be, it's, it's not gonna be the Union Moon that they're thinking it's going to be.
We need to keep these folks' ideas in mind, 'cause there's nice homes over there. And I can understand them not wanting the property values to go down.
Absolutely, and I, and I welcome the discussion. I welcome to work with them. Uh, because the design is gonna take a while to design it. I'm, I'm not trying to shy away from it. I want this question, I want to be a good neighbor. Because like I said, this is gonna be, we'll be staying there at times.
Mr. Kimmer.
Mr. Klitch, do you own this property?
No, I have a contract that's intended upon leasing.
And do you develop mobile home parks or RV parks?
No, my background isn't in construction.
And did I understand you to say that the entrance would not be from Highway 72, but from Stewart Road?
Correct.
And that is right across from the subdivision?
No, the subdivision is at the back end. What, what, you're gonna be on Stewart Road for about 100, probably 100 feet before you turn right into the driveway.
And is that because of Aldott? Did they decide on where the road?
Um, it was, we met, I met with Aldott on site and we kind of figured out the best approach of if this big 45-foot trailer's coming in, it's actually gonna be easier to turn from Stewart Road, um, because of how the intersection is set up. But none of these cars leave remotely close to homes.
Would the inlet for this park be, when you get on Stewart Road, how far, how close do you get to Fox Run before you turn in?
So, where the, where Stewart Road, we don't have to let, we have.
I see it, I see it on the map now.
This is gonna go right along, so it's not gonna, any of the traffic is not gonna be by the lungs at all.
Am I correct to say that it's gonna be in Aldott's right of way where your road would be?
Yes, yes. And I've already talked to them about this, and they, they're the ones that put the access to 72 away to the inlet. So they said they'd like to do an engineer drawing and all this stuff for this.
You don't have that yet?
No, because I, this is all. No, because I, this is all continued in the boundary zoning first.
Okay, you were before the zoning board or the planning commission and they denied your request?
Yes, their recommendation to the city council was no. But my, this is the city council, I really think this would be a good thing for both the economy, for businesses, just great for the, really good for the city.
Anyone else?
Uh, sir, what's the going rate for upscale, for a lot per day?
So, the rate, what we would do is somewhere between $65 to $75 per day. And usually offer a weekly rate of whatever would be six days. Right now, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out to balance what will be best, but it's going to land somewhere around that, maybe $75.
So, what's to keep the not-so-upscale like the cousin Eddie's coming in?
They can, they absolutely can if they want to.
But they pay the price.
Usually having at a higher price point, they're going to go to other RV parks first before they come to ours. It's, you know, if, I am looking at a guy for a couple who spends $400,000 to $500,000 on an RV that knows what they look for, they, they know what space they need, they know what privacy they want, that's the market I'm targeting. I'm not targeting the $10,000 travel trailer weekend deal. And like I said, there's a need for it, there's a market for it. And so ultimately, especially as hospital spans, I think, I think it'll be, it should all happen.
It's a possibility if you don't develop enough high-end RVs that it could go to the lower end to make money.
What do you mean?
If you don't have enough high-end RVs and your park's empty, you're going to take the other ones to keep from losing money?
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say no to anyone, but if, if someone comes in, we'll have our rules and our policies and procedures to help maintain the order or, you know, while people are there. I mean, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and say no, no. There will be certain requirements as far as age and maintenance of the RV to come into the park. Like, I think, I think it'll probably be, you know, no more than five or maybe five, but definitely no more than 10 years old. You know, it has to be kept up, we'll probably check registration and insurance when they come in. Because that's happened a couple places, I think it's a really good idea.
That's, that's kind of what I was asking, how are you going to control all of this?
Yes, so there, there will be requirements. Now, I'm not going to ask them, would you spend $400,000 on your RV?
Well, of course.
But, but I am going to make sure that it's in good shape. So that's, that'll also be a...
Kind of tell me the price range, I'm not a camper. And so, if, if I was going to stay at a smaller park, what?
The operated Goose Pond range is anywhere from mid-30s to around $50. County Park is around $30. Again, those focus on more long-term. Goose Pond has, the vast majority are monthly sites and there is a long wait list. In fact, they said that the people that are getting called right now for the month openings have been waiting for about two years. So, so there is a need for RVs. Like I said, we'll probably be somewhere in the $65 to $100 in that range.
So you're going to be double everybody else?
Too much.
Okay.
Let me ask you, will you have somebody on site every day?
Yeah.
Because I know you said that you wasn't going to be here all the time.
We'll have several employees. We'll have at least like a camp post, then there'll be maintenance people, maybe full-time cleaning people or find a cleaning service in the, in the local community to start a contract with. I mean, there's, there's multiple ways to see it happen, but there will be, this will create, you know, not a ton of jobs, but this will have some jobs for people in Scottsboro. So, yes, but there will be, there will be several employees inside.
Anyone else have any questions? No more questions, uh, we'll move this to next week's meeting and for a vote whether or not to move forward to a public hearing or not.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Number two, discuss the 772 agreement with High Country Toyota, Mr. Watson.
Good evening, I'm Joe Watson, I'm here for High Country Automotive. High Country is asking that towns should consider a expansion tax, expansion tax incentive agreement. Now, very generally what that would be is they are expanding their operations in the city and they are asking the city to consider rebating a portion of the new automotive and general sales taxes that will be created by the expansions. I'm happy to talk in as much detail as you want me to about that, but also that my request went around, they don't know.
I, I don't see any reason to. We've met, I think, three times already on this and I believe it was just getting a few words changed in the contract. So, does anyone else have any questions as far as moving forward with this?
Um, the existing automobile dealership, automobile dealership, is it going to still be open to the general public?
I think that if they plan to keep that open, if it, obviously intentions could change, but if it were to change, there is actually a, what is called an annual threshold. So, so that's why I emphasize the new money. So they have to bring in a certain threshold of sales tax and automotive tax based on the current amount they're making and only once they hit that threshold would this incentive come in. And I believe that threshold is based on a number of years of current averages of what they're bringing in this year. So it's only new money that will come from the expansion of the automotive.
See in the packet, it's in there written up to stay open. Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this? No other questions? Well, actually, let's see. We have to publicize this and so we'll move this to September 12th meeting to have a public hearing that night on it. And then we'll have a public hearing at the work session and we can actually vote at that meeting on that night. So, thank you. All right, number three, discuss the Bass Tactics fishing tournament, Mr. Roden?
As a council player, we've had a organization come through to us, Bass Tactics, and it's a new organization in the state of Alabama that ended in the state of Mississippi since 2015. We met with our, we had a local, somebody met our primary, we had a local committee, we made up with the mayor and myself and Goose Pond and a couple other people, we looked over this. They have been very successful in Mississippi, they want to bring, they're bringing to the state of Alabama four tournaments, a state championship and a national championship. They want to come here for one of their four tournaments. They're expecting approximately 320 anglers, so it'll be 160 boats. They originally requested $4,000, the committee just said, since they were brand-new to the state of Alabama, we thought that was a little excessive, so we went back and offered $2,000, which they said they would, they would do it for $2,000 this year. They would like probably come back in the future. The entry fee is $80 per boat. This is a junior tournament, in other words, they actually said K through 12th grade, kindergarten city fishing, but they, they wanted to, they get that kid for the tournament. It's a very, like I said, again, a brand-new tournament, they, they're trying to bring in the guest speaker, Jordan Lee, who's a two-time Bass Master Classic winner. They're, they're going all out to try to make the Alabama Trail as successful as the Mississippi Trail. They want to have a pre-tournament meeting at the Civic Center. The dates for the tournament is October the 7th and 8th, so it's coming up very quick. They, the mayor and I both discussed, it's better when we know a lot more advanced than this, but we said we would talk to them and we did, and then the committee mad and said we would offer back $2,000. So my request to, to the city is $2,000 from the lodging tax fund to bring in a Bass Tactic tournament of 300 appropriate brands.
Anyone have any questions on this?
I don't think so, I think that's...
Just reminding the council of the last email, I believe we had a little over $2,000 in the tourism grant fund right now, so. Anyone else have questions or comments? All right, we'll move that to next week's meeting for a vote. Thank you. All right, number four, discuss the city of Scottsboro's vehicle management program, Mr. Ledwell.
This program is something we've been discussing on and off for several months. We just have a synopsis of kind of what the program will start with. This is designed to be able to move at the market. Instead of having to come with individual vehicles at a time, if the market allows it, we can sell them for one to two years. We just wouldn't have to come back every time to go over that. The proceeds, of course, is in this program also is designed for what we can buy from the state auctions or from, you know, the used pool, what have you, put in our departments out of this fund. I do believe that it's a way the city can exchange some vehicles and some equipment with the money this generates rather than coming forth each time a department needs, you know, these vehicles for it. We have done this just as a trial on a couple of them and it proved to be successful, so I don't see a reason why the whole program won't work.
I know we've talked about this probably six, seven times, so...
I was reluctant with this in the beginning. It had to be proven to me and it has been proven that it works. When you buy a vehicle and drive it for a year and make 10 grand, do it as many times as you can. And doing interest-only law, you're not taking anything out of the general fund except the interest you pay back.
Actually, we'll be able to take that interest even out of this, this fund.
Right.
So...
This shouldn't, this shouldn't affect the general fund in whatsoever.
No. No, anyone having questions on moving forward with the city of Scottsboro vehicle management program? All right, we'll put that on next week for a vote. Thank you. Number five, discuss the ordinance related to litter, abandoned property and junk vehicles. Mayor, you want to get back with us on this?
Uh, yes, if I could, and I appreciate, I just thank you for coming last week to raise this. We went back and looked, I met with Mr. Davis, our compliance officer, reviewed status of several different complaints. Historically, we have always responded to the complaints rather than being able to be proactive. And to Councilman Dawes' comment last week about needing to be more proactive, I think everybody agrees with that.
Yes.
Um, one point is this is going to involve a lot more than just Tupelo Pike in that neighborhood, this is going to involve the whole city. And so, Mr. President, my request would be to ask you to appoint two council members to work with myself, police department, Mr. Davis, to review the ordinances listed and to develop a proactive approach to move forward with this.
Okay.
We've got a lot of areas in town that, that need to be addressed and I think this would be a good path forward.
So you're asking me for two people?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Dawes? Mr. Stewart, would you agree to be on that? Okay. Mr. Dawes, Mr. Stewart? That'd be yourself, Mayor?
Yes.
And Officer Davis?
Officer Davis and anybody else that we need to, to pull in.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Davis, is there anything else we would want to add?
So, kind of give us an update where we are though, because I'm, I'm still needing, far as I know, there were some fines?
Well, he has been working with the, the folks, we've received complaints on, he's been working with them and we actually reduced the timeframe from 30 days to two weeks.
Okay, so we're down to two weeks?
So he is, there has been some progress made, but he and I did another tour and I think almost all of y'all have done tours through as well and seen a lot of the same issues. So, that's really what prompted me to request a couple of council members so we can, can address this the way it needs to be addressed. But he has been working with, with these complaints to try to get them corrected and has been some progress, but not what we need.
Yes. As far as not getting what we need, what, what's the process when they don't?
Uh, they are cited and they go to city court, to municipal court, at which time it's up to the city judge to address and assess the fine or sentence.
And have we seen that happen?
We have had some fines assessed, when they have been threatened with an assessment, some of them have cleaned up and there have been some fines assessed.
Okay, thank you. All right. So how many, how long will you need to get back with us then, once you have this committee?
We're going to need at least a month or, or more to be able to sit down and go through these ordinances and make sure that we figure out a way to address everything in the city because again, this is not just one neighborhood.
Okay.
And, and once we start, I've got a couple of suggestions that I'll need, actually need to come back to the council, for council's approval.
Yeah.
Because this is going to be more than a one-person job and we're going to have to figure out a way to engage some additional support.
Well, September, of course, you know, Labor Day will be the first Monday, we'll double up on the 12th, but the 19th, September 19th, can you come back on that date with?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And we'll put that back on the work session for the September 19th to see progress and what needs to be done to move forward. Anyone else have any questions about that? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, number six, discuss the resolution to apply for the economic development grant. Mayor, you can go over that.
This is a request to allow me to sign a, to apply for an economic development grant, a community development block grant, I'm sorry. This will be for the Whataburger site and it will be to develop a road from the highway to the back entrance to Whataburger as they, as they open. It's a $200,000 grant and the city would be responsible for $40,000 for that match.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? No questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting also. That'll conclude the meeting. Delegates, I've got a couple people wanting to speak, Mr. Miller? And before, I know you both want to talk about the zoning, I just want to remind you that this is, save long speeches for the public hearing. Just, uh...
Really what I want to do is give you this so you'll have something to look at. I'm a person, my mom and I, I'm a two-year age that have gone into this proposal, park, whatever it is, RV park. I'd like to say this, his proposal did sound good. The only problem is why put it in a subdivision? I mean, that's my backyard we're talking about here. So I will cite those comments the next time, I just wanted you to have some information from my deep thoughts on why I opposed the state of the commission, the county commission.
Okay.
But I will, it is next week.
Now, we'll just vote to move forward if we're going to have one or not. And then at that, next week we'll decide the date.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
I will be brief, I know I work in radio, so you may not think I can be brief, but I'll talk about that. I am a business owner, so I am not anti-business, I'm pro-business. And I'm not going to deny the fact that I think his RV park would be a great idea for Scottsboro, but not in the proposed location that he wants to put it in. My wife and I live in the Fox Run subdivision. Property owners, regardless of where they, where they live and have their property, they're always concerned about what's in their backyard. I'll kind of compare this to if... I'll kind of compare this to, if I ever had an idea of moving the radio station from where its location is right now, the station's been there since nineteen sixty-four, there's a big tower behind that building. If I wanted to move the radio station to, say, downtown Scottsboro Radio on the Square, that would not be a problem. No one is going to let me pick up that tower and put it on the square, or pretty much anywhere else in a big residential area. It just wouldn't happen, no one would want that in their backyard, personally for us. Again, I'm not going to deny the fact that it would be a good idea for Scottsboro, just not in the location that's being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. We'll move to reports, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have anything else tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I really don't have anything, but thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ashman?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Toller?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Dawes?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Let me have a few things then. Reminder, next Monday night, we'll have SWDA meeting at four o'clock here in City Hall. Also, reminding everybody, we do start budget hearings tonight, and we will continue Tuesday, five o'clock, Wednesday, four o'clock, they're all here, and then, next Monday, following the meeting, of course, not the next Tuesday, because that's election night, go vote, and then Wednesday, the next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at four o'clock again here. So, and we'll have more after that, and I'll announce those next week. But we do start budget hearings, just want to remind everybody of that. With that being said, I have nothing else, and we'll have a meeting next Monday, hope to see all you there. We're adjourned.